Wrong call, please. Matt Baker.
Here.
One Broughton.
Here.
Meredith Cole. John Curry.
Here.
Your Spencer.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, we will adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Doug.
All in favor? Thank you. Tonight, we are going to recognize the swim team. Coach, come on up.
Right. So, this past fall, the boys went to state. They did an incredible job. We had three relays or two relays make first team all-state, which hasn't happened in three years. If you know that this sport, you know how incredibly hard it is and how difficult it is, and it speaks to the hard work that they put in all season long and how much they trusted each other and swam for each other. We also had the first diver in program history to earn all-state honors, which was very, very awesome to see. And then, obviously, we have our All-American Whittaker Stewart, brought home two more state championships, breaking his own school records, broke his own Class 1 record in the 200 freestyle and broke the overall record in the 500 freestyle as well, which, if you know this sport and you see those times, you understand how incredible it is what he's been able to do. And for my money, you know, he's the best athlete to ever walk the halls of Carney High. So... And because of his immense talent and his dedication and perseverance, he was awarded with the Miska Class 1 Swimmer of the Year, which is the highest honor you can receive in Misha swimming. So, it's obviously great to have him, as well as our other seniors that were integral to our team and the relays. And our newcomer, Braden, our sophomore, helps studies. You know, we got a 6'4" guy coming out for swimming. So, he was awesome. And then, obviously, Isaac making school history, being the first diver in program history to earn all-state honors. So, it was an incredible season, and I couldn't be more proud of him. So, thank you.
Oh, you're not done. You're not done.
You've got to try to come up.
One at a time. He's going to read them off. You're going to read them off.
So, Parker.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not my turn.
Thank you.
Sorry. That's okay. We're rolling with it.
Did we do something wrong?
I didn't tell her that stuff would come up.
I had to read through the email to make sure as I drove out of the parking lot that I wasn't having boys.
That's good.
Yeah, we know that. Okay, we do not have any public comment tonight. So, next, we will have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. So, tonight is a little bit of a bittersweet night. So, at the end of this school term, we will be saying goodbye to Ginger Elsie and Jennifer Kopp, who've done so much great work for the district. But, we are here also to introduce some of our new teammates, which we're very excited about. So, in the back is Doug Schwinn. Doug Schwinn is coming to us from Spring Hill, Kansas. And Spring Hill is a little bit larger than Carney. $120 million budget, pretty significant. Yep. Okay. And he's been really successful in helping his district with a number of bond measures. They've built several new schools, renovated schools. And he just has an extensive amount of experience in public education finance. And he was former president of CASBO, right? And so, that's really the State Organization for School Business Leaders. So, really excited to have Doug on board with our team. So, welcome, Doug.
And with us today, sitting in the front row, is Dr. Valerie Utteck. And she will be replacing Jennifer Kopp as the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services. And Valerie is currently the Assistant Superintendent in Cameron R. One. And she has extensive experience in the Liberty School District, where she was a former elementary principal. And really, when you look at her background, a lot of her experiences align tightly with Carney's priorities, whether it's Real World Learning Initiatives or Success Ready Student Network. So, very excited to have you join our team as well. So, welcome.
Moving on, just a quick weather update. Just want to thank parents and staff. I know we are looking at another difficult, challenging day ahead of us tomorrow. So, more, we're continuing to watch that. I know people are anxiously awaiting. Currently, we have used five of our AMI days. Recently, Dussie disclosed that we have the ability to do a sixth AMI day. So, we will need to communicate with elementary families and send out packets. So, more information to come on that. Again, we're only mid-February. There's a lot of potential winter left. So, we're already at the cusp of trying to think about whether we need to tack school days on at the end of the school year. We know that's not ideal. So, that's why we take every decision about school very... It's very important. We know that the best learning is with kids in seats and in person. So, again, when it's safe to do so, we want to have kids here. And so, some of the decisions, we've held off and waited so we can make some good calls. And we've been able to do that with some two-hour late starts. So, more information to come on that. I also want to share just a reminder that we have a school board candidate forum hosted by Carney High School. The date for that is March 18th. The time is 6:00 to 7:30. Our emcees are Emmy Gates and Jacob Dillon. And just as a reminder, we will have four candidates that will be onstage. It will be Christina Lindsay, Joe Hickey, Justin Cook, and Jason Clint. So, we encourage you, if you can't be there, just as a friendly reminder, you can watch it on YouTube. This summer, MSBA will recognize our very own Dr. Darlene Bailey in receiving the distinguished Board Member Certification. She, in order to earn this, had to have 64 certified Board Member Credits, engaged in a variety of leadership, advocacy, and presentation activities. And this is MSBA's highest certification.
Darlene, with that, I want to present to you the certification. Picture?
Absolutely. All right, where are you headed?
Three, you coming up?
No.
Which way are you going? This one? You don't have to move. Yeah, get out of that town.
And just in closing, I've got a few things that are coming up this week. Golden Girls and Girls Swim are heading to state this week. Boys and Girls Wrestling are also heading to state next week. Basketball districts are the first week of March. And again, it's just an outstanding reflection of what our Bulldogs do, season by season. They perform academically, they perform athletically, they perform in fine arts. It's just, you know, again, never want to take that for granted. So, thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move to... Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Doug.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have information items.
Chief Thomas, would you like to come to the podium?
My name is Mark Thomas. I'm the chief police here in Carney, and I'm really happy to be here tonight. And I was told that I get about, was it 10 to 17 minutes? I can't remember the exact number.
Five to seven, close.
I'll try to keep it as short as possible. I have a reputation for telling stories, and I'll probably try not to do that today. I want to try to stay quick to the point. And moreover, if you have any questions after I get finished up or after the meeting, I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys might have. Or if I have time and I can get through it quickly, then I'll answer any you have right now, right? So, but I don't want to hold up your meeting any longer. So, a question for everybody in the room, and if you've done the homework or not. Do you remember when Carney was on this top-10 safest cities list in Missouri? It was about four or five years ago. We were in the top 10. Anybody have any idea where we're at right now? Thirty-six. Now, there's a number of reasons for that. It's not necessarily that a crime wave has come across Carney and we've been invaded by the Bloods and the Crips. That's not the case. Some of it is a reporting issue. In other words, we have a new reporting system. And the best way I can explain it is if there's a situation where there's a burglary, a stealing, and let's say, a sexual assault, in the past, they would take the highest of those three charges, and they would report that. And then, they since have changed that so that they report that as three. So, that affects our number. It goes through the neighbor's system. It's a federal system and everything, and that's what they report on. All I know is when I pull it up on Google, we come up at 36, and I don't like it. And my goal is to improve that. So, there's a number of ways that we can do that. We recently received the approval from the Board of Alderman to include this Proposition A on the April ballot. The way that that came across was we thought we were sunk. We had an opportunity to do it, and then, we mirrored the statute that Smithville had used. And then, when our attorney looked at it, we found out that it included Platt and Clay Counties in the description in the statute. Well, that sunk us. So, we were back to square one. We thought we were going to have to contact our legislator to start it all up from scratch. And we were a little disheartened, to be honest, because that's, as you all know, that's a three-year process. We... What we did at that point is that my friend is the chief police in Smithville, Jason Lockridge, and he found another statute that applies for us to be able to do this. The difference being with this proposition and this statute that we're using, it has a 25-year sunset clause. The other one did not. So, it's a different setup a little bit. But the biggest... The other thing is it's a sales tax within the city. And I want to talk about that in just a second. So... Last year, overall, the budget for the police department was about $3.05 million. 2026, we're right at $4 million. And that's the approved budget that was approved last night. A win for this proposition that we're wanting to do includes items that are not covered in this year's fiscal budget. When we got the budget back before we submitted it, we had to trim it down considerably from the things that we asked for. And that's standard protocol for everybody, right? Everybody would like to have these things, but when you can't have them, you trim it back and you do the best you can. We're doing that. But the bottom line is, right now, for the last, I'll say, five or six years, our budget's been getting cut more and more each year. And we've been kicking that can down the road a little bit. And we're at a point right now where there's some things that we really want to do in order to get back into that top 10 in safest cities. We'd like to increase the number. And this is a big list, by the way. There's some more on some upcoming pages. We'd like to increase our number of SROs. We'd like to include a community outreach officer. A brief description on that is this officer would do things with the community. They do training things with the community, such as teaching kids and PTOs and any number of people in the community what the dangers of fentanyl are. This is real. This kills people. This kills our kids. And it's a serious thing. But they'd also do things with the community, like teaching people how to be safe in their homes, how to keep our churches safer in the case of an active shooter. Any number of community outreaches that we would do throughout the year, that officer's going to be really, really busy. And it would be a great way for us to connect better with the community. We wanted to enhance tactical training for officers. We need upgraded computer systems. And just a quick question, do you guys have, and I know you're on top of this already, we have Windows 10, by the way, for all of our computers in the police department. October 1, guess what you can't use? Windows 10. We have to replace everything. So, that's a huge, huge thing. We also like to keep competitive pay with our officers. This is real when you have officers that are making just entry-level pay. And kind of like a teacher, you're trying to feed your family. And it's a challenge, as you guys know. We have other agencies that are dangling a lot better money, sign-on bonuses, you know, better benefits and all the other things. And we're full staff right now, which is something I'm very proud of. But it certainly is a challenge. As we go forward, we need to stay competitive. Here's some down-the-road expenses that we're looking at, not only, not just today. We have things that we need to fix right now, like buildings, computers, and the normal run-of-the-mill stuff that we do every year. But down the road, we will be needing detention staff. We'll probably end up having dispatchers for our own radio system. We'll need updated radio equipment. We're going to probably need a cybercrime investigator and maybe an officer assigned to DWI enforcement, traffic safety officer, training officer, and intelligence analyst is a huge, huge help for our department. We'll need more clerks. And then, here's the thing that I found out recently. They actually have an AI intelligence, and I'm old, so I... This is new, all stuff is new to me. They have the ability to take a body camera of an incident and turn that into a police report, which is crazy to me. I'm old-school. I started out doing stuff with pencil and paper. They make fun of me about it all the time, so... Here's some of our notable statistics from 2022 to 2024. Calls for service are up from 4,000 to 5,991, and that's a 49.7% increase. Now, a call for service is something that can be either a car stop or a dispatch call or something like that. And that can run from anything to an accident report to a burglary or anything else. Oftentimes, they take a number of officers. So, sometimes, one call can have two or three officers attached to it, but that's still just one call. So, that's a significant increase. Arrests are up from 76 to 212. That's 178%. Stolen vehicles are up from 14 to 19, and that's up 35%. Some of these things are tells, and we pay attention to them. And we want to lower some of those numbers if we can, raise others that we need to. Here's some additional large expenditures on our horizon. We have a lack of radio coverage for our police radios at the station and in the community. And we need repeaters, and we need them now. Funding for new safety equipment for our officers, such as CAD radio improvements. We'll always need vehicles, body cameras, ballistic vests, TASER upgrades, computers, and all the things that are associated with equipment needs, and most importantly, officer safety. Now, this year, for our budget request, I focused on officer safety issues. That's near and dear to my heart. I care for every single one of these guys that put a uniform on with me every day. And I want to see them get home to their families every day. So, we included an upgrade on our pistols and on our rifles. Our pistols are 40-caliber pistols that we don't... No one else carries 40-caliber pistols anymore. They've all transitioned to a 9mm, all the agencies around us. The reason that's important to have the same caliber pistol, let's say that there's a shooting at the QuickTrip or something like that, we respond, and the highway patrol's there and the county's there, and we run out of 40-caliber bullets. They can't even throw us a magazine to use. We've got a paperweight in our hand. We're done. The rifles that we had were manufactured in the Vietnam era that we had been using as hand... Well, they're not hand-me-downs, but they were supplied to us from the DoD through the highway patrol, and then, they're on loan to us. So, they can ask for them back anytime. When something's that old, it's not quite as old as I am, but it's going to break down. It's just the way it's going to be. They're not efficient for police work. They're too long. So, an M16 is great in the... Out in the wild or whatever. But when you're having to clear a building or something like that, they don't work as well as the modern-day rifles. The other thing that we really did a great job on is increasing our training budget. And so, we're doing a lot better training. Two years ago, our training budget was, two or three years ago, $12,000 for the entire department for the entire year. And that's abysmal. It's not really acceptable. But it was around the time of COVID. Nobody could get out to go do training, so I kind of get it a little bit. But we've increased that tremendously. The guys have really... They're getting a lot more leadership training, a lot more officer safety training, and a lot more additional training on drones and, I mean, SROs. Just saying. Some training that we really did need. So, what does this dedicated public safety tax mean for Carney? It will not apply to utilities, gasoline, or prescription drug purchases. And that's by statute. The dedicated sales tax by state statute cannot be utilized to replace the police department budget. It will always supplement it. So, we will always have that tax money come into the police department directly. Now, because we have a fire district, fire district instead of a fire department, there's a big difference, as we know. We don't have to share it with those guys. And for a public safety standpoint, they have theirs that they passed last fall. We'll have ours now for this year. It does have a 25-year sunset clause. But everyone who shops in Carney, both residents and non-residents who rely on public safety when they're here, will be paying this sales tax, myself included. I live outside of town, to the west of town. And I shop here. I come here all the time. We're here every day, right? And I think it's incumbent upon me to help pay for that, and not only the citizens of Carney. It'll add approximately $900,000 a year to the police department's budget. This won't kick in until October. If it passes in April, it takes a while to go through the state and all the things, and it will not kick in until October. So, we won't really get that... That $900,000 won't start accumulating until then. So, what is it that does a half-cent sales tax look to John Q. Citizen? It's a nickel on the cost of a $10 Jimmy John's meal, although I can't eat there for less than 15. So, it'll add 50 cents to the cost of $100 grocery purchase at Price Chopper. But by the show of hands, has anybody been able to go to Price Chopper and only spend $100 lately? I mean, I've not. And it's just my wife and I, so it's crazy. So, with your support, we can return Carney to that coveted top-10 list for the cities of Missouri. We need this tax because we don't have the money in the budget. We ask for some things, and we have to balance our budget. As everybody knows, it's a state law. And we can't get what we need in order to do what we want to do. And I know that sounds like a generality, but I've got a lot of other opportunities out there that I really want to go forward with, and I'm looking forward to it. Did I get my 10 minutes in? I'm sorry.
Sure did. You're good.
Okay. Any questions, real quick?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Bond project update. Hi, guys. How you doing? Thanks for coming.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. So, there you have Hawthorne Elementary. Like school, we had some bad weather as well. It impacted us a little bit, but we were able to actually make some really good progress over the last month. Slab-on-grade at Hawthorne is complete. We are lacking a few courses on the CMU Masonry. With a good week this week, we plan on topping out and starting structural steel in the first part of the following week at Hawthorne. Go to the next slide. Here, we got the front entrance at Carney Elementary. We've been able to get the slab-on-grade complete, all the MEP underslab rough-in is complete. CMU courses are in. Structural steel and steel decking have started. And then, this week, we're going to start framing those walls at the front entrance. Back of Carney Elementary, again, we made huge progress, even with the tough weather that we've had and weather this week. We're about two weeks away from topping out the CMU at Carney Elementary on the back new addition. And then, structural steel will follow that. Next slide.
I think that was all we had.
Well, Dogwood Elementary, we were actually able to top out the CMU this past week. We were able to get the structural steel set. We also had a beam signing at the school with all of the kids were able to sign the beam and the staff and the teachers, thanks to Ray for being out there and taking some really good photos. If you haven't seen those yet, I would... It was a fun time for everybody. It was cold weather, but it looked like everybody had a good time. So, that's kind of where we're at with bond budget. Any questions?
Are you guys able to work through this week as far as with the cold weather?
This week has been pretty quiet. And we are taking advantage of every day that school's not in session and trade. You know, tracking down electrical work that we're going to be doing over the renovation, trying to get ahead of all of that stuff, panel locations. So, we've got all of our trades taking advantage of those non-workdays.
One thing I would like to add to the bond project update. So, you know, Ginger provides a monthly report and does a beautiful job. We did receive some good news today from Jason Hoffman. So, because Newkirk's been working so closely with Eric on some of those other projects, roofs, things like that, we're hopeful that our arbitrage number will be less than what's currently budgeted at $1.6 million. We're hopeful that it'll come in closer to $1.3 million. Again, that $200,000 to $300,000 could allow for additional projects to happen. So, a little bit of good news. We're continuing to monitor that, but I thought I'd include that.
Financials, I guess.
Just a couple of points to make here. As of today, we've received a little over 96% of our property tax, which is good for us. And you'll notice that there's an increase from 17% in your operating fund balance to 18%, primarily because we do not anticipate having to fund our insurance account for this year. Did you have any questions on any of the other reports?
And just as a reminder, we'll continue, hopefully, continue to see that trend go upward towards as we close out the year to June.
Remind me, funding that insurance, is that like an every-other-year thing? Do they, do we?
Self-infunded... No. No. So, I mean, basically, we collect the premiums, and that's how it's paid for. Right? So, part of what Ginger is tracking is when we get rebates in from prescription usage or when employees, they hit their aggregate, and then, we receive checks back to the district. So, we're continuing to monitor that. It will take us probably two years to really get a feel for the total impact. But again, like I mentioned previously, some of our neighbors are experiencing large renewal percentages. So, we are hopeful this is the right direction long-term.
All right, thank you. Program evaluation, safety program, emergency response, and intervention. Thank you, Eric.
Good evening. Safety and security program evaluation. Our main goal is to provide a safe and secure environment for our students, staff, and visitors. and visitors to our facility. How does this apply to our school district and our goals and strategic plan? If you take a look at our mission statement, it obviously states that we want to provide a safe and supportive environment, along with our strategic goals, creating safe and secure learning environments. You can divide our program into five areas: operations, capital improvements, systems, partnerships, and relationships. Brian, what happened? So our operations team, our leadership team, is myself, and we have a school protection officer, Adam Kirkland, a SRO, School Resource Officer, Cameron Phillip, and they are both sitting behind me. Appreciate you guys both being here. You'll have a chance to ask questions of them when we finish. SRO versus SPO board, I know you know the answers to this because we've discussed it in the past. Just to clarify for anybody who might be in the audience, school protection officer, in this stance, we label them as a school district employee, and that is Adam Kirkland. The spring and summer of last year, we were able to coordinate with Kearney Police Department, and we relabeled Adam's designation from SRO to SPO, becomes a school protection officer. At the same time, Cameron Phillip came on board, continued with the Kearney Police Department as an officer with them, but became our SRO, School Resource Officer, and he was able to start with us in September. Couple of just basic differences. An SPO, School Protection Officer, may be more involved with disciplinary actions, investigations, searches possibly, just because he's no longer, he's not a law enforcement officer and couldn't, won't jeopardize necessarily law enforcement. Whereas, an SRO, KPD officer, will not normally be involved in school discipline issues, but will take the lead on any kind of legal issues or law enforcement on campus. Our SPO, School Protection Officer, can't arrest, but he can detain and eventually would turn over something, some person to a law enforcement officer or administration, depending on what the case may be. Both of them are armed, trained, and certified individuals to be on campus. Regardless of who it is, we want them outbuilding relationships with our students and staff, completing building checks daily, and we want them to be a law enforcement, safety and security presence throughout the district in our buildings every day, so people see them. They take and train our staff on Alice and other emergency procedures, and they're, of course, our liaison and work in coordination with our local law enforcement. They provide security at events, serve on our safety committees, and speak to classes when asked about law enforcement and safety issues for our teachers. And then they will also conduct a summer police academy for our middle school students. If you take a look at this chart, just to give you some little feedback on what our surrounding districts have as far as SROs, SPOs, the center column shows the armed officers, armed individuals in the school districts, and safety staff would be, some school districts employ non-armed safety monitors, hall monitors, things like that. And then on the right-hand column, you can see the ratio of where we're at as far as armed, or actually, safety staff compared to school enrollment. What do we spend our money on besides their salaries? You can see we put money towards secured entry upgrades, camera upgrades, radios, upkeep of those, AEDs, Narcan vehicle for our SPO, and securing some exterior doors. If you take a look at our five-year budget, it looks fairly skewed from the years past when it was fairly consistent, but if you remember, we had a $200,000 Missouri State grant for upgrades. And you probably are familiar with this from, we've talked about it before at board meetings last year, but wanted to include this because those projects all finished up within the last school year. Most of that, we spent all but $12,000 of it, and most of it was spent on cameras, exterior doors, controlled access, and rekeying one of our elementary schools' exterior doors. Also, within our 2022 bond projects, we've got some upgrades at some elementary schools that are some done, some will continue into the summer, be modifying our secured entryway, adding some additional control access, and some contact sensors at the exterior doors that don't have the card access. Some of the systems we've put in place and have in place, the first two are the ID system that you come across if you were a visitor to our schools called Hall Pass. P3 tips hotline encouraged to report are both anonymous texting apps where you can, if you've got a tip, call it in. LineWise is our program that monitors our online searches, online chatter within our school district, and we've got online bullying report forms, Raptor Alert systems, and we use the MOX system to have background checks for our incoming employees. Partnerships, we've got many. I'll point out, we've got, obviously, we have an intertwined good relationship with our local police department, our county juvenile office, and our fire and rescue. I'd like to also point out that we do do a lot with our MSBA Center for Educational Safety. They've advised us on our emergency operation plan, behavior threat assessments, and our assessment tool for the physical security assessments that we have started doing for our buildings. Maybe the most important part of this would be the relationships that Adam and Cameron will be forming with the different groups in our community. And it's not just those two that are important to the process. It's everybody working and forming these relationships and intertwining between those groups, Adam, Cameron, local law enforcement, and so on. Try to kind of keep track of things. We obviously, we want to take precautions to prevent things from happening, major things at that. And something that is, we're able to track would be some of our major incidents in school with our discipline. Hopefully, we make a difference in that. But, so we've tracked alcohol, drugs, vaping, assault with injury, weapons, and then incidences that have been referred on to KPD. You can see that we've, we had an uptick in drug incidents, slight decrease in vaping and assault and weapons. So we'll continue to track that. What do we see in our future? We've, short-term goals? We would like to, and this was a goal of ours that we were just keeping on board, and that's our process of assessing our buildings for security and safety and the measuring process of that. And so two years ago, we had an outside entity come in and assess our buildings, and we used that to make some of our decisions on what to add into our capital projects and our bond projects. And then last year, we used our assessment tool from the Center for Educational Safety, and that was our first in-house assessment last spring. And we're anxious to take that tool that we used, further refine it, and then we have our second round of in-house assessments that Adam, Cameron, and myself will do this spring. And then we would like to make sure that we continue with our upgrades to the secure entrances, which are really tied into our bond projects. Long-range goal is also a continuation of what we had last year, and that is to assess and look at possibilities to increase our number of district's SROs and with that, integrate them into our school days and school buildings as much as possible. So don't have a lot of answers on funding that all the time, or even what the perfect number is, but we do think that there is a benefit in having their presence in our district going forward. Just to finish up, just some general concepts that make a lot of sense for people when they think about safety and security. If you see something, say something. Be concerned about it, but not consumed by it. And there is no one fix, one singular fix to fix security. And security is everybody's responsibility, not just these two guys. It plays into everybody's hands. With that, ask for any questions, and Cameron and Adam, happy, they're the boots on the ground and out there every day, so.
How often is your committee, you know, with the parents and support staff, you know, like, how many times are you guys meeting a year? And are you guys continuing to use, you know, like, our CSIP, you know, our strategic plan, and find ways that we can continue to integrate more safety, security into our process?
We have met twice a year.
Okay.
And that would be the original parent safety and security committee. And the Kearney Schools Safe Schools Task Force meets quarterly.
Okay.
And yes, we do, we use that strategic plan as a guide for what we are trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Other questions?
I think I will just add, you know, the addition of, and we've talked about this for a number of years, of addition of school resource officers. And just adding, you know, to Adam's credit, he covered nine campuses all by himself for 10 years? 11 years? 11 years, right. And so adding Officer Phillips has been greatly beneficial. I mean, for both gentlemen, it's increased visibility, and I think we're hearing positive feedback in that respect. And so, again, the intention was really to introduce children to law enforcement in a safe manner, build relationships. And so I think we've seen the benefit of that, so. And congratulations, Officer Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have action items. First one is approval of amendment with Newkirk Novak.
Move to approve Amendment 8 with Newkirk Novak as presented.
Second.
So hello again. So tonight, we're asking, Newkirk Novak Construction Partners requesting approval of Amendment 8 to include elementary playgrounds in the amount of $840,714. This includes work related to playground upgrades at Southview Elementary, Hawthorne Elementary, Dogwood Elementary, and Kearney Elementary. Over the past several weeks, we have received competitive bids for the playground upgrades that we feel fit within the budget. And if approved, procurement of the materials will start the first of March, and work will take place over the summer, with all of that work being complete by summer or fall start of 2025.
You're guaranteeing it'll be done before school starts?
That's what you pay us for.
That's what pay for, yeah, that's right, Ben. Just you.
So we did, we received three bids from three fully capable, fully qualified contractors. We met with them on-site multiple times. We had multiple phone calls. We met with Eric several times, so we feel like we've got a good number and ready to move forward if you guys accept it.
And this essentially, as is our philosophy with the work we've done in all of our elementary schools, that we would have an equitable approach to the playgrounds, and they would have maybe not all of the same equipment, but a lot of similar equipment in a variety of things for our kids to enjoy that they haven't had before.
Each one's getting some inclusive pieces of equipment, which is really important.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
And in the past, PTO has kind of chipped in for each building, right? Just to kind of throw that out there that...
I'm not sure, Ginger, you might be able to answer that, if they've paid for all of it, but playground equipment is expensive. And our elementary kids use it all the time, and so it will be well utilized. And again, it just brings parity across the district, because if you look at our playgrounds, they're not all at the same standard. And if we're relying on PTOs, that doesn't, we can have a better approach.
Are we just adding two each playground, or are we removing?
Yes, addition two. So there will be some equipment that's going to be removed, but replaced with newer equipment. And most, all of them will be receiving new turf. Some will be receiving new underdrain. The number that we received is all-inclusive, from demo, earthwork, drainage, concrete, turf, demo of equipment, haul-off of materials, and seeding and sodding when they're done.
Will all the playgrounds be done at one time, or will they start at one school and move across the district?
They'll probably, they probably won't be happening at the same time.
You got three bids. Was, is that pretty typical for the playground equipment? Or do you normally see, you know, five, six, or is it, like, what?
This is one where there's not as, not as big of a pool, because there's a kind of designed function with each of these unique pieces of equipment. We grab the ones that are kind of the usual suspects in the Kansas City area, and so feel good that we got good competition on it, even though it's not seven people like...
Like we like.
Right. There's just not seven vendors here in the city.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next.
And just one last thing. We'll likely be back next month. We're working with Eric and team to get some of the other needs that outside of the projects we're currently doing, that, some of the maintenance needs and some of the added things. So we're working on those things now, preparing them. So we'll probably see you next month, asking for approval on a few more things.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, next, we have approval of the agreement with Care Portal.
Move to approve the agreement with Care Portal as presented. Sorry, I'm slow.
Second.
All right. Ms. Cupp?
Yes. Care Portal is a service which would be utilized by our social workers to help us meet the needs of our kids. Our social workers are pretty magical at finding resources for our kiddos, whatever the need is, whether it's finding a kiddo a pair of football cleats or find out a kid doesn't have a belt on, they, they know what to do and they can fill these needs. But Care Portal is just another layer to add to that. If there is something that they cannot find, they can put the need, and they can enter it into Care Portal, and Care Portal will go out and they have lots of resources and will find that for our kids. We don't, we don't want to use it all the time, because our social workers do not want to lose the relationship they have with our community. They work directly with our churches, and they want to continue to make our community incredibly, to our kids. But sometimes we have an unusual, finding somebody in our community. So, and that's where Care Portal will help.
So we'll still have mitten trees at church?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
Have we, have we used Care Portal before?
No.
I've been a part of Care Portal before, like, from the other side, where, you know, the giving side, and it's, it's an amazing tool for, especially for us, to be able to use. So I'm actually excited about this, because I think that this is something that's next level. It'll help your social workers. I mean, like, there's so many good things about this program that it'll fill a lot of needs for our kids, especially those that need the help. And it allows people in Kearney and around communities to give to our kiddos. So I think it's an amazing, amazing piece.
I like the opportunity in the heart of that giving spirit of the community in a really intentional way.
Yeah.
You get to be pretty specific with that, and I like that.
All right. Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have approval of agreement with Panorama.
Move to approve the renewal agreement service order with Panorama as presented.
Hey, Panorama is...
You need a second.
I'm sorry, didn't, I thought I heard one. Excuse me. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Got a second? All right, go ahead.
Okay. Panorama is our platform that we use for not only identifying social emotional needs of our students, but also our student success platform. It's kind, it's a place where everything is put into one place, whether it's attendance, it's test scores, it's kids' academics, as well as their social emotional survey results. This is something that is paid for by the Clay County Children's Fund. It is a way, the people who use it most right now are our counselors and our social workers. This really helps our counselors and social workers identify kids who might need to be put into small groups, small therapy groups. It also helps identify kids who do need other types of therapeutic support. Catches kids who might otherwise fly under the radar that might not otherwise be identified.
Jennifer, do you want to mention what type of groups or what are those triggers in Panorama, those five different areas?
Um, yeah, the, the areas of the survey that it catches, the first part, which is the individual survey, it's more emotional regulation, positive feelings, social awareness, and supportive relationships. The other part is more school climate, and it talks about school climate, sense of belonging, teacher-student relationships, and school safety, how kids feel about these things. You know, they, you know, counselors use it in their lessons. It helps them identify things that kids might be concerned about, and they use it in their counselor lessons. It might just help a counselor learn about a kiddo that they feel like might, you know, be pulled in, just checked in on. It's, it's just been, I, Megan Masters was supposed to be here tonight. She uses it on a daily basis. But her little boy had to go to the hospital tonight, so she wasn't able to join us. It's, it's just been an incredible tool that has built momentum over the years. I think anytime you have a new product, we started in 2021 with it. And I think anytime you have a new product, it takes a while to really gain that momentum. And I think we really have that now with our counselors and our social workers where this is being used very well.
And so, you know, Panorama has come up as an item of discussion for multiple years, right? So one of the things, you know, I visited with Jennifer, in particular, I believe the concern is regarding the survey tool. And so one of the things that we discussed, we're going to talk a little bit about selection of questions on where you can go with questions versus how we've elected to pair things back as a district.
Yeah, and, and I will say, the first year we gave it, we, we just gave the Panorama survey. We didn't take hardly anything out of it. And it took quite a long time for the kids to take in. And it, we just did not need all of that information. We have now, we go through, there isn't anything that is meddling in any way. We have pulled anything out. In fact, you have to, in order for kids to only, parents have the option to opt out, that you have to take out any, anything that could be personally identifiable, you know, encroaching on family's privacy in any way you have to pull this out. Or it's, it's not nearly what it used to be.
So the level of concern when we first started, because I think that's something that, you know, we've talked about in previous years. So how many opt-outs did you have when we first implemented and where is that now?
The, the first few years, we probably, you know, we would have 100, 120 opt-out. This last week, 34 students that were opted out. We have parents that do come in and ask to see the survey. We will share the survey with parents. And, I mean, I wouldn't bet my last penny on it, but I do not believe we have ever had a parent that asked the survey that then came back and said, no way, I don't want to do it.
So I think this is a two-pronged issue, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to your questions and thoughts. You know, one, is there value in, in this type of screening? And I, I call it behavior. Other people call it SEL. I call it behavior. Where we're looking for kids who internalize behavior, anxiety, depression, kids that externalize behavior, that can pose a risk in the school setting, or kids that even just frustrate out due to academic performance, right? So the survey helps to tease some of that out. And so does, does behavior have a direct correlation to academic performance? I believe that it does. Is there value in screening for that? I do believe there's value. The second part of that, and really we're, I think some of the questions are, is the product, right? Is it, is Panorama the right selection? And so I don't want to preempt the conversation. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have, but thought would be at least, we know we've received some questions, so we thought we would start with some background information.
Of the 134, whatever the number was, that opted out, was there an overwhelming reason why they were opting out?
Well, no, we only had 34 this year.
Well, I mean, in, in the beginning, before you started tailoring the questions back, what was the main reason? Was it just the types of questions that were being asked?
Honestly, we're, I think we're coming right off pandemic and there was just a lot of, I, that was a time of a lot of distrust with the district, with, you know, everything. There was a lot of conflict during the pandemic. It was just...
I think there's, there's also a belief that SEL means something deeper than how we're interpreting it in Carney, right? Which is, which is really trying to look at where a student functions behaviorally and trying to put supports in place. I think that's part of the conversation on what, what does SEL actually mean, right?
So my opinion on all of this, so I'm a parent that's opted out all four years of Panorama. My question would be, why do we have to use a survey that we have to pull questions from? That's concerning. That's how you create mistrust. That, that is a, it is a, not a good piece that you should have to do. You should be able to, if you're going to do a survey, do a survey. I also feel as a board member that there's a fine line between, as a school district, do we interject our parenting views as an educational, well, public education, that are we crossing a line as far as who's the parent who makes these decisions based on behavioral? You know, if a kid has a behavioral issue, are we directing them to the resources they need? Or are we trying to step in and say, hey, we know what's best for your child, right?
I think it's, I think it's an end of both.
Yeah, but I, but I see it differently.
Sure.
And on top of that, I also feel that it, I asked last year, like, I've always tried to be very supportive of the district and say, hey, I'd like to see other options. And this is probably where I'm living with my no vote this year. I've voted yes every year before that, even as an opt-out parent. But I'm going to vote no because I asked for other options. And you guys didn't bring that. You didn't bring it to the table. You're just trying to give me a backstory of why you like this so much. And I, and I respect that, I do. But at the same level, I asked for something and I was told in that meeting that I would get that. And I didn't. And I'm not. And so I'm really kind of holding your guys' feet to the fire a little bit here, maybe a little strong with a no vote for it. But you, you told me you were going to do something and I'm not getting that.
Okay.
And so I, I think it's a fair no vote for that reason. But on top of that, I'm not a fan of Panorama. I've never been a fan of Panorama. I think Jennifer knows that. And that's not a tack on Jennifer either. This is just, it's a program that I don't feel is, is somewhere we should be, you know, is there, me and you had this conversation. There is a piece of behavior that we do have to address.
We do.
But at what level and any program that I have to go through and cull questions out to decide where the line is, that's tricky and that's dangerous. And it can be dangerous where in, in some climates, you know, politically, and Jennifer, we went through this, I mean, come on, four years ago, that was rough. Like, it was politically, it brought its way into the door where we're trying to be apolitical here, and we're trying to keep politics out of the room, and we're trying to do what's right for kiddos. But when you say, hey, I'm culling questions, all of a sudden, there's a question of transparency. There's a question of what are they trying to get by us?
You know what? I, I will say, I, I mean, I could pull up every single question for you. I'd be glad to give it to you.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's probably anybody on here that would have an issue with those. We selected the things that we think are, you know, get us to what we want to know. We don't need to know anymore. There is nothing in Panorama that I think is like super invasive.
To you? That's your judgment?
And I, and that's why I said, I don't think there's anybody on here that would think that they are invasive. I really don't. I don't, I don't think you would think they're invasive, John.
Did we do something prior to 2021?
No.
So this was implemented then to try to meet these needs?
Yeah. And another piece to this, and just, just more information for your consideration as you consider the vote. So Clay County Children's Fund pays for Panorama, as Jennifer mentioned earlier. So all of the school districts in Clay County use Panorama. Children's Fund is using this as kind of a baseline metric for who's, how many kids are getting services. I mean, and, and again, that's, you had a conversation with their president of their board, is that right? And they're not trying...
I'm going to jump in on this one. No, I want to...
Let Emily finish what she has to say.
I want to jump in on this because it's a great point. But Carney is not everybody else.
Yep. And Jennifer had that conversation, John, just, just so you know, do you, share that conversation because I think that's, it'll, it'll be helpful, right?
Well, first of all, we were the early adopters. I told you that last year because you told me, I said, other people, that's what everybody's using. And you said, be a leader. I'm like, we were a leader. We used it first. And, and they really liked the information they were getting from us. That's why the Clay County Children's Fund encouraged the other schools to do this because they liked the information. And something I, you know, I know that Matt wasn't on the board, I'll sell a little background information. We're given a substantial amount of money to provide services for our kids. And we want to make sure we're providing it to the kids who are needing it. And we know we have kids who are flying under the radar that are hurting. You know, we would never provide services for any child whose parent does not agree. We have parents coming to us saying, you know, can you help us? Other times, we see the way things are, you know, coming out in the survey, and we do contact parents. And the parents have no idea, and they're very grateful for the information. And it's not always the kids that you think it's going to be.
Yeah, do you want to mention, so you spoke, is it President Koenig?
Uh-huh, yes.
All right, so, and so this was, this gets to your point earlier, John. And so the conversation, and let me know if I'm stepping out of bounds here, or do you want to go ahead and...
Well, about dictating what we do?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he said, he absolutely said, we, they have always tried to meet our needs. We create our budgets every year. We turn it in. Here's what we, this is how we would like, this is how much money we hope you will give us, and here's how we'd like to spend it. And he said that they've really tried to meet our need. They would never dictate to us and tell us, you have to use this product. He said, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, we're going to take all your money away if we don't use this product. He said, do we think it's a good tool? Does it help us? You know, like you guys, they have to be good fiscal stewards of the money. They're watching over a huge amount of money. And this is one of the ways, this is the tool that they use to see how they're doing.
So I think it was just to your point, John, that we needed to ask that question. So we, Jennifer had that conversation, which I think is important, yeah.
I mean, he said, I, I hope you guys can continue to use it. Are we going to take all your money away if you can't? No.
When we offer parents to opt out, and if they request to see the survey, are they allowed to do that before the children take it? So at any point, they can...
Oh, sure. We, Panorama, you know, in our first years, we asked that. It's like, what if a parent, because when a parent asks us, it's like, oh, we don't know. And so we asked, they said, absolutely, sure. They don't want it out there published because that would skew the data. Parents are going to tell their kids, you know, you're getting the same results if you just publish it out there. Individually, your parents will see it, send it out there.
And we don't, one of the things we talked about is, we don't have that online, open and readily available for parents to see because that can potentially skew the data results. But if parents have concerns and want to see it, they, they by all means have the right to do so.
And you said when we first started, it was how many questions?
Well, I mean, it was...
I guess how many, what have we trimmed it down to? How many questions is it now, on average? I don't need like exactly.
Ian, there's two different parts to it. They both eat, they might take 15 minutes each for the kids to do it.
Have you guys explored other options?
So I am aware of another option.
Okay.
I've used another option.
No, because they didn't do it after last year, when they said they were gonna.
When does this agreement expire? June, is that right?
Yeah.
So we have a little time here to present something else? Should, should we not proceed forward with this or table this or whatever the board decides?
There is time.
Here's what's wild, is if they would have brought something else or brought both and said, these were the two options, and this is the one we went with, I would be voting yes. It's just that simple, for me. I asked for, I mean, and I don't want to say this is all, but if someone tells me they're going to do something, I expect them to do it.
So I think that what you're asking, Matt, is, is fair. I don't think that there's any deadline that says that we have to have the vote on this tonight. And I think it's due...
The Children's Fund budget.
Sure.
Our request, so if the, if we don't pass it, then we wouldn't put it into the budget. So then it won't be paid for through Children's Fund if we do want it later.
I wonder if they would allow us to amend it? We can answer a question.
It's $39,000, $40,000.
Yes, it's a chunk of change.
It is.
So, so we do have that, we had that option. What is your deadline?
My budget's due March 15th.
Okay. Do you see any path to where we could...
You could do a special session. You could do a special open session.
That's what I was going to say. Yes.
Okay.
So is that, is there sufficient time for the administration to look at another option and present us some more information? And then perhaps give us options?
And I, and I know that Megan had circumstances that couldn't, but so can we hear from boots on the ground of, in the buildings of...
I, I have a list from all the counselors, the social workers, how they use it.
Sure.
Every day.
Okay.
I mean, every single day they use it.
Okay.
It would be a, another, I mean, it would be, it would be big to take this away.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Procedurally, it could be withdrawn or postponed.
We could withdraw the motion or we can postpone the vote on that motion to a future...
Does someone need to move to postpone?
Mm-hmm.
Does someone want to do that?
Move to postpone. Agree.
John's going to move to postpone. You're going to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Do we...
You need to vote that postponement?
Well, we are going to need that, but first, are we going to postpone it till when? The next regularly scheduled board meeting to a future board meeting? We should just have that language in there.
Postpone to a future.
We don't want to just postpone it.
Postpone to a future board...
To the next board meeting?
Well, it would be...
We're dealing with a deadline.
Yeah, that was the deadline.
Not with that date, that's a moving date, possibly.
So if we postpone with no date, what does it take to bring it back? Do we have to have a meeting to bring it back?
I believe...
What do we, just pushing the table of the motion and then we can come back and when they bring something on, on another session, we can just start fresh. Put it on there.
We could, that would, then that would go back to withdrawing the motion.
Okay, so would you be okay?
Okay. So would you be okay?
They only pay for.
I'm going to move to motion to withdraw the motion.
I have, it all depends on what you put in there and then they go through. I mean, Panorama is the one they use. So I can't say for sure. I think we'd probably be on our own, on another one. But I don't know for sure.
Matt, are you willing to withdraw your second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we had a motion to postpone. Those have both been withdrawn.
Yep.
Now we need to withdraw, we need to withdraw the motion to pass in second?
That motion, that is me.
Okay.
Motion to withdraw.
Okay. So both of those motions have been withdrawn? Okay. And we'll expect to hear more back from?
So do we want to vote on that final motion?
Well, they've all been withdrawn.
Well, we still have to move, we need to, we need to vote on the move to withdraw both.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Previous motions, right?
So both withdrawals, we got to vote it?
We didn't, no, we just need one. We never voted on the, we never voted on the first one. We never voted on the second one. Both of those motions are now being.
Got it.
Right? Everybody agree with me?
Yep, I agree.
Make sense?
Yes.
So we just need to vote on that final motion to withdraw the previous two motions. Yes? All in favor?
Opposed? Thank you.
I'll get that all typed up.
Okay.
Quickly later.
Sounds good.
Good luck.
So we'll, we'll look to the administration to come back to us with more information in as timely and fashion as possible because of potential deadlines.
We just want another option. That's all. You're, you're just looking for an A and a B option.
Yeah.
And you want like?
Difference between programs. Like we do with everything else that we have a budget for. Everything we do, there are multiple bids on. We had three bids on our.
I was just asking.
Yeah, I mean, like, I don't think it's an unfair ask.
Well, no, and I said, I sent that email to Emily on Thursday or whatever day it was. And I asked that question because I remember having that conversation, John bringing that up. And I thought we were going to have multiple options to choose from. I didn't know the language of the Children's Fund saying, we have to use this one if that is what has to be done. But I do agree, I would like to see another option because I've not seen another option since I've been dealing with this one. So I just wanted to see what else is out there.
Educate me, Jennifer.
That's, yeah, that's all I was asking for.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
All right.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. All right. Next we have approval of the laptop purchase.
Move to approve the purchase of laptops from Dell Technologies as presented.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Board member comments? Anybody have anything to add for the good of the cause for this evening?
It's good to be back in person.
Yes, nice to see you.
I've been traveling a little bit. For those who know, I have, I have a job in Ohio, but I'm going to serve on the board until I'm still a citizen. I'm still a resident of Kearney. So I'm still going to sit on the board until we officially move my family to Ohio. So that will not happen until school's out because I have one that is in school. So we're going to wait that process out. But I am in this week. I said you didn't have to cancel school for me. But I'll bring this weather. But Ohio is probably about the same. So it's good to be here. It's good to see all you guys.
Nice to see you. Thank you. All right, important dates. Stay tuned for the most important date on everyone's mind, school tomorrow. March 5th, no pressure. March 5th, the district will be the host of the Kearney Chamber Lunch. So I know board members have been asked to attend if they are available and in town. March 18th is the board candidate forum at the high school, which Dr. Miller already mentioned. March 19th is our next board meeting. And if we have all the snow, maybe we just won't have spring break. That would be a whole other problem. So March 24th to 28th is spring break. And next miscellaneous?
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in March, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Roll call, please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Len Broughton?
Yes.
Meredith Cole? John Kern?
Yes.
Bruce Schweitzer?
Yes.
Nick Faskas?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes. We are adjourned.